Good evening, fellow council members, city staff, members of the public here and those at home. I hope everyone has had a restful Thanksgiving. We are here today with only one agenda item. This is a meeting that city councilors have called to publicly respond to my opinion column in the Republican Journal, published on November 22, 2018. I realize that the councilors may feel hurt by what I wrote, and I feel sorry that there are hurt feelings. Unfortunately, no council member has discussed with me what their concerns are. Instead, councilors have called this emergency meeting to publicly respond. I will learn, as the public does, what the councilor's intentions are. I am worried that this meeting serves no benefit to the city and the business of the city, and may, in fact, worsen our working relationship. City councilors often exercise their First Amendment right to free speech by writing to local media, as was evidenced in the last election. Currently, we have an opportunity to move past this, to return to the business of the city. We are role models for young people in this city and across the region. Let's remember this as we move through this meeting. I will read our previously agreed-upon meeting ground rules before opening the meeting for Ground rules for council communications. Councilors will signal the mayor by raising a hand to request to speak. The mayor will recognize councilors to speak in the order of the mayor seeing councilor's signals. The purpose of council communication on each agenda is to carry out productive debates, share ideas, hear perspectives, and work towards consensus before any agenda vote. When there is not consensus, all views will be respected, and the losing side will accept the loss graciously. Active participatory discussions may continue as long as needed before a vote is taken. Please be respectful of councilors and mayors when they speak, and listen with an open mind. The mayor's role is one of presiding over the meeting, and thus is one of diplomacy. Differences or disagreements are welcome and may be discussed freely. General meeting guidelines: Show respect to council members and the public. Work towards concise communications. Try to finish meetings before midnight, optimally before 11:00 p.m. And I will let you know that I have to work tonight, so I will be leaving by 10:30 if the meeting goes that long. Organize meetings such as that the agenda items that are most likely to require public input are scheduled early in the agenda. The mayor may call for a break in the meeting at any time for a short period. Councilors may continue to take personal breaks as they see fit. If anyone feels personally offended or threatened by the discussion, that person, councillor or public, will make their best effort to explain this for council consideration. All council action and representation shall be made by the council as a body. So our first and only agenda item: Discussion on Possible Action on the Mayor's Guest Column in the Village Soup Newspaper last week, and on council procedures and behavior. I'll call on Councillor Sanders, since he called the meeting.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for that opening. And I agree that I would hope that we can work together and move past this. I want to be very crystal clear tonight that the remarks I'm about to make are only directed towards the mayor's role, not Samantha as a person or an individual, but in her role as mayor. And my goal tonight would be for the council to get back on track and start doing the business of the council, which is the business of the city. So I think we're all in agreement on that. I have some bullet points that I'd like to read, and then I would like to open it up to the other councilors and the mayor for discussion, but thank you for letting me go first. I would say that, to preface this, I got some phone calls. I have beyond my family, I have a work family, I have a government family, I have a theater family. We have a lot of families, we all do. And I started getting some calls on Thanksgiving evening about the mayor's article in the paper, and some concerns. And it was too late in the night for me to go get it, so I went on Thanksgiving morning and got a hard copy because it wasn't available online. And when I got home with my coffee and the paper, Courtney and Piper were up, so Courtney said, "Well, read it out loud to me, so I can hear it too." So I'm reading it out loud, when Piper, my 10-year-old daughter, interrupted and said, "What's..." It was amongst the line about bigotry, sexism, and ageism, and she asked me if the mayor was calling me a bigot. And I said, "I don't know," because it was unclear. But at that moment, having realized that the power of free speech can reach my 10-year-old daughter, I felt compelled that perhaps we should have a meeting to talk about it. And I mean that sincerely to everybody, but it's very awkward as a father to try to explain to your 10-year-old child what a bigot it is, and how you don't feel like you are one, if that was your intent. I don't think it was, but I wanted to preface why we had this meeting, that I decided we should all talk. And I think that's an honorable reason, because I think kids are important. So I'm going to read what I feel, and then I'll ask the councilors to open up, if that's okay. And some of these are just direct bullet points regarding the mayor's letter, so half of this is what the mayor said in the letter. And I wrote it very, you know, I'm more of a rambler than this, but I'll try. "Your letter to the Village Soup Newspaper regarding your experience at the annual chamber dinner, I found offensive, laced with inappropriate innuendo, inaccurate, misleading, and self-serving. It did not represent my goals, actions, or what I feel are the intentions of the Belfast City Council, particular actions and statements of concern. In my view, you called an honored citizen demanding a personal written apology, Lee Woodward, and attempted to impact his free speech with a critical letter to the newspaper of your own. And I don't support that personally. I view that as a form of intimidation." You raised many issues to the newspaper that you had neglected to raise with the council. The council first heard about this knife. I had never even seen a knife, but you implied that the practice of a council member, it's apparently Mike Hurley, to occasionally have a knife on his desk was some kind of message of hostility that you could not tolerate. And I reject that, as the presence of a knife represents, I'm not sure what it represents, apparently a granola bar opener, or intimidation. And any concern over it probably should have been talked to Mike about it, and my understanding is Mike was never reached out by you to discuss it. You asserted the same member, Mike, was verbally aggressive at the meeting with no mention of the conduct of the public in that very conversation, and you highlighted it was a male council member being verbally aggressive with a female constituent. And I took that as some sort of inference, if you will, of gender abuse. That's how I read it. And I reject that notion then, and I continue to reject it today. The facilitated meeting that we had, and I'm not sure what month it was, I'm going to say July, it could have been...
August.
...August, came about because of several reasons, one of which was the council, I felt, was trying to better understand your concerns at the time. There were times that you said you felt unsafe, or not comfortable. The facilitator, if I recall correctly, concluded that the council was a reasonable group to work with, her words, and encouraged continuing communication between you and us. Reading your allegations in the newspaper, I didn't find that to be the sort of open communication that I think the facilitated meeting was all about, personally. At the time, we also, the council did reject any feelings of hostility toward the public or to you at that meeting, if I recall. I'm almost done, folks, I apologize. You refer to your constituents in the newsletter, and I would feel compelled to remind you that they're all of our constituents. It's a city of all of us. You mentioned another line that I felt I didn't understand, was that the council would prefer for you to be seen and not heard. And if I'm misquoting those by word or two, I apologize, but I don't have the article in front of me. We've been over a year now with you as mayor, and in that time, I believe you've had every opportunity to speak thoroughly and completely. And I encourage that, not discourage it. You continue to say that we try to limit when you can speak at meetings. It's a little different than that for me. We're not trying to limit what you say or how much you say, but the order seems to be a point of contention at meetings, that you perhaps jump in ahead of the other councilors. I know that we've tried working together, and things have gone better, and sometimes they go back, and I think there's a period of time that the councilors feel they're not getting a chance to speak. And finally, you assert in the article, as I mentioned earlier with my daughter, that you have encountered sexism, ageism, and bigotry in the first year of your service. Your rather broad swath of accusation would appear to be leveled at the council in the article, to me, since the council was being discussed in the sentence before. I'm not sure. And I would have to say that I reject that statement and resent it, because I have never heard from you or any others of any of that. And that's just how I feel. I also think, I think the word, I don't want to use the word "labels" the wrong way, but I think sometimes that, as a society, we're turning to labels instead of communications. And I find those types of words to be labels to me, that I don't mess around with. So I don't agree with some of the statements or the accusations or the characterizations that you made in your letter, and it has left me with the need to call a special meeting, because I think the trust level that I think we've all felt, including the mayor, the trust level throughout the course of the past year has gone up and down. And I would like to get past that, as the mayor said, and get on the same path together, because finally, I was elected, and the reason I went first tonight, just for full disclosure, is I'm with Mike, the longest-serving councillor, and I thought, "Well, I should take point on this," because I've been here, it's my 10th year. But we have a city to run, and I think we're spending a lot of time trying to manage ourselves instead of the city, and I don't like that personally. I'd rather get beyond managing ourselves, be adults, and run the city, which is what we were elected to do. So, thank you very much, those are my thoughts. I'll open it up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know what's interesting about this, is usually councilors and mayors disagree on policies, and I can't think of one policy item that the mayor and I disagree with. Council pretty much is, occasionally, I've come up short on a 3-2 vote or a 4-1 vote because I wanted a tree not cut down, but that's about it. Our entire, these discussions, which have consumed us a lot, tonight, we're supposed to be working on Belfast Yards, and we're not, and that's a real loss. I'm not going to read my entire endorsement letter for Samantha. I met with Samantha many times before she ran for mayor, and it was a big deal for me to endorse her over Walter Ash, who's my friend and a longtime-serving member in many, many degrees. I did it because I really saw a lot of potential with the mayor, and none of it surprised me to find out later that she was young, or that she was gay, or that she was a woman. I knew all those things. So later, to be called out for bigotry, sexism, and ageism, I thought it was a really cheap shot, and I think it enables hate speech in this town, and I'm really taken aback by Needless to say, I'm pretty disappointed to be here tonight doing this. This all started, we were going along, I thought, pretty well. There hadn't been a single problem, really. We were going along. We had a hearing on whether to decrease height from 50 feet to 45 feet. Two people spoke for about a half an hour without ever mentioning height. They talked about lots of things, and culminated in a poem that asked us what was the price of the child we were willing to kill for the salmon farm, and I'm paraphrasing the And that was about as much as I could take, of being asked if I'm ready to murder a child. The mayor, who was presiding over that meeting, did nothing to bring those people and ask them to speak to the subject, that's what a hearing's about. And I think encouraged by not doing that, encouraged that kind of interaction. That was the beginning of all the conversations that we've been going through. We then had a workshop, which never really got to the nexus of what we were supposed to be talking about. It was, I don't know that we could have, but anyway, we, you know, people, I've had a lot of people saying, "Why don't you guys all just get in a room and work this out? Can't do that. We have to do it like this, so that you can, so it's part of the public, public proceeding." But we did have the workshop, and we came up, the mayor just read them, and then a few things that have continued to exacerbate this situation. You know, we had one of the leaders of the Smart Growth people, and this is afterwards, call us spineless. You know, get up right here and call you spineless. And the mayor, who's in charge of presiding and asking for people to speak to each other nicely, says nothing. So it leaves us without anybody who's presiding over the meeting enforcing the rules, what So whatever we come out of this with tonight, I want to say one thing. I had somebody call me from one of the newspapers and say, "Is there a recall effort?" And I said, "Not with anybody that I know of." And there's no recall effort, I wouldn't support a recall effort, not looking for a recall effort, I think it would be grossly inappropriate. Whatever happens tonight, the mayor is going to be the mayor. I was looking at a discussion of a bunch of bullet points, which I sent to Samantha before she ran. I may have encouraged her, because I said, "Nobody can define the job of the mayor other than a very few small points." It gives you an enormous amount of running room to make the job your own. And in various discussions here, I have both supported the mayor continuing to do that. I've also spoken against, though I'm going to clarify it, this idea that the mayor should speak last after everybody. The mayor presides over the meetings. That said, what's been happening of late is the mayor jumps, the mayor presides. We don't call these items on the agenda. And then the mayor jumps in and starts talking until, just about until, the oxygen is gone from the room, and then looks around the room and says, "Jeez, anybody else got something to say?" That's not how you run a meeting. And I'm really tired of it. At the last real meeting, I called it as a point of order, and it will continue to be a point of order. There is a place for everybody to speak, but the chair has the additional responsibility not to abuse that power, and that power has been abused. As to Lee Woodward, I can tell you, I was up at Hannaford's a couple of nights ago. People on both sides of me started yelling about how, very nicely, but how they didn't like having to pay five cents for a bag. That comes with the territory, you know, and I enjoy that give and take. They weren't being thankful about it either. Everybody's got an opinion, and everybody gets to express it. I think Lee Woodward is a town treasure. He's a very funny guy, and if you get anywhere in his sights, he will find something to say about you that is funny. In this case, he remarked on the Belfast City Council, and I wish the mayor had just let it go. Yes, it brought up the elephant in the room, much as in my family, we bring up all the elephants in the room at Thanksgiving. Not all of them, but many of them. And I'm sorry that it marred really honoring a guy who literally was nearly dead on his office floor, and deserves to be honored and given accolades, rather than, this is how it's going to be remembered, I'm afraid. I think, I'll pass right now, and that's about it for me for right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Like Mike, I supported you in your election. I was proud to, I'm still proud I did. And I'm hoping we can work this out, so that, in a way that we can all move forward and work together. We've got an awful lot to do. We have things that have not come to full fruition, and we're working through the process, there are going to be more issues before us. We have ordinances to write on marijuana, we're looking at housing, we're looking at so many things, and we're spending time on personality issues. So with all good intention for the success of everyone sitting around this room, and the public, and the city of Belfast, I'd like to start with, I'll discuss what kicked off this current controversy. Your column about Lee Woodward. I was not able to attend the dinner this year. I did watch the video that Ned made for Lee. I understand, I believe this was the first time you had attended. If I'm mistaken, I apologize, but I believe you said it was the first time you had attended. It does tend to take on, kind of the aspects of a roast, and I guess you weren't prepared for that. I watched that video, and the entire video was basically a roast of Lee. So any comments that were perhaps missed humor were not out of context of the rest of the evening, from what I could tell. As Mike said, you get made fun of a lot, you get, you know. And where the line of hurtfulness is, I think you have to look at the person, what you think the person's intent was. And I don't think that there was any intent to be hurtful. I think that you have a great future, and someday Stephen Colbert might be making fun of you. So you might want to consider that. I think that what you said in your column to Lee was inappropriate. I will remind the mayor that she sat in the chair she sits in right now, and chastised councillor Hurley and myself for what she thought was uncivil behavior towards members of the public. I dispute her claim, I have, and I still do. But putting that aside, it's ironic then that the mayor should feel that she can use the prestige of her office to publicly chastise a citizen for making a joke. I find that very inappropriate, and I hope you'll consider that, and perhaps give Lee a call and talk to him about it, and the two of you hopefully have a nice conversation. To move on to the bigger issue involving this council, I feel that, I don't know where we could give you more opportunity to speak. You seem to, you're very articulate, and you have every chance to express yourself. You've also done any number of outside events, which, as I have seen, have been very well-attended. You've had those opportunities to speak. I've heard you interviewed on the radio. And I just don't see that we have stifled your speech in any way. As to these comments about ageism, sexism, and bigotry, I'm a 63-year-old male, I'm sure there are things that I don't see and don't hear, in my own behavior and in that of others. And as you read yourself in the rules there, the guidelines that you read, that when things like that come up, they should be addressed at the time, and not left to linger, or fester, or lead to even worse bad feelings, when it might be a simple matter of education or misunderstanding. But now, every member of this council, I'm sure, has had the experience in the last few days of having members of the public, some we thought were friends, some we thought respected us, calling us a bigot, calling us sexist, calling us ageists, all of us, indiscriminately, with no charges made, with no actual allegation, with no examples of bad behavior, none. That kind of trial by insinuation and innuendo cannot take place. I urge you, if there are problems, to bring those problems up. I don't know, the assumption from reading the article, that everybody I've spoken to about the article, made the assumption that you were specifically talking about the people sitting around this room right now. It may also be that you were talking about employees, staff members, purveyors, people who do business with the city. If that's the case, we should know, so we can stand beside you. If you don't feel comfortable talking to the council about it, I'm sure there are other means that you can talk to someone outside the council, who can perhaps meet with the manager and yourself, to talk about issues, so that we can get it out on the table, and that we can stand by you and by any employee of the city, or any citizen of the city, who has problems with those issues. But the way you did this, it tarred everybody. You called out all of us, and again, I don't know that it's just calling us out. There may be members of the staff, or city employees, who feel like they've been called those things through their work with you. Could be members of committees you've sat on. So a lot of people are wondering, "Was she talking about me? Did I do something? Did I say something?" And I think that needs to be faced, because I think it's a problem that will only get worse, not better. When we had that, I thought, I may be the only one who walked out of that facilitated meeting thinking that great things had happened. You and I spoke, no, I'm not, because you and I spoke afterwards, and we were enthusiastic. And maybe if we can return, thank you very much for reading those guidelines. I think maybe what I just, every once in a while, just read them, so that everyone remembers them. And more to the point, it's not about the letter of any rules or guidelines, but the spirit of them, that we all have to obey. As a member of this council, I have the greatest respect for the mayor. At this point, I am uncertain whether the mayor returns that respect to the council. Thank you.
Thank you.
So for me, the op-ed letter in the newspaper was not the beginning. It was the end. And I'm going to kind of go backwards. I was not able to attend your meeting that you held at the library on Saturday afternoon, 3 o'clock, mayor's goals, and your role as a climate activist. But I was able to watch it on Vimeo, and there were a number of comments and items in that presentation, which were repeated in the op-ed letter. And the one that jumped out at me was the comment about ageism, sexism, and bigotry. And I had to sleep on that. It wasn't that I was hurt by it, I was astounded by it, I was mortified by it. And when you then wrote your op-ed letter a few days later, I could not believe that you were repeating it. you were repeating it again in a different public forum and format. I was not hurt by your letter. I was once again astounded and mortified by your letter on so many levels. I will never be able to explain them all. I think that by this broad, broad comment with no clarification and definition other than pointing that finger verbally, and those three words, which are very important words in this society and many others, I do not feel that can be tolerated. That was a breaking point for me. We've been through a number of uncomfortable months and discussions and rough patches. And I have felt that it was important to give you the benefit of the doubt in those conversations, because I don't stand in your shoes, and I will never stand in your shoes, and I will never have all of your life experiences. I have my own, and I filter things through my own life experiences. And so until you open up and share with us some of your background and life experiences, and I was very happy to listen to that forum you had at the library, because the first half of it was about your background and life experiences. I learned about your 4-H experience with leadership and going to Washington DC for the first time. That's exciting for a young woman of 15, I think it was 15, and hearing other things that you had not shared with us of your background and what led you to this place in life. And that, that kind of information and sharing is something wonderful and precious for young women and girls here in Belfast, Waldo County, the world, because they need to see role models and look up to role models, and learn that things they're doing in their own younger years will lead to something in the future, and that they can have hope and dreams in the future. And that's something very important, and we don't have enough of. When I came up through the age range that you're in, I didn't have as many mentors. It was a different time in this country, very different time. And I faced different trials and tribulations as a woman in business and the civic arena. So when you hold back parts of your quote "rich" experience, life experience, and don't share them, we don't have crystal balls, and we cannot understand, know, appreciate, attach some of those maybe to some things that come up in our discussions, or things that have made you uncomfortable, or maybe even disrespected, or hurt, any number of things. So communicating takes place on many levels and has many end results. So I'm disappointed that you, as a fellow woman and role model, have, I believe, abused that trust that young women and girls have put in you. And that's what bothers me, number one, two, and three, about this whole situation. Next, I must speak to Lee Woodward. I have known Lee Woodward for 20 years. We are fellow Rotarians, and I'm a Realtor in one of my professional lives, and in that role, I work with local attorneys as relates real estate business. So I've worked with Lee in many capacities relating to real estate. And here is a man that has a rich, deep background of giving of himself to this community in so many ways and avenues, I can't even begin to enumerate them. And this is a man who was on death's door last spring, and by a miracle was saved and brought back to life, and he has returned to full capacity. And this is a blessed miracle that we can all be thankful for. And the chamber sending out their vote, voting ballots to the chamber membership to ask for people to vote for the Citizen of the Year, which is not announced in advance, it's the one that's held back as a surprise. And not surprisingly, Lee Woodward was chosen by chamber members who voted as this year's Citizen of the Year. And the direction from the chamber to the people who participated in the video that's always put together about the selected Citizen of the Year, they were told to treat it as a roast, and they did. And they made great fun of attorney Lee Woodward. And Lee, who has a very dry sense of humor, a very strong sense of humor, and is the top, in my opinion, is the top roast master in Waldo County, got up to respond to his learning of this award, and pretty quickly therein went into roast mode. He is an equal opportunity roaster. There's no question about that. He referred to certain people in the audience by name. I was one. My name was repeated several times. Councillor Hurley was another. His name was repeated once or twice, other people in the room. He never referred to you by name or title, but he did, out loud, in a public forum, bring up the two elephants in the room that have been the elephants in the room since this council hit the rough spot back in, I believe, April, and they were not fully addressed at our facilitated meeting in August. But because they were not, that does not mean that the public at large has not been following this in many formats. And the public at large that was present in that room, there was roughly 200 people there, they knew exactly what he was making a joke about when he addressed the two elephants in the room. And that's what it was. It was a roast addressing the elephants in the room that everybody, or most people, were well aware of, and that's what made it funny. And one of the things that I learned at a very young age in business, when women were not in business, I'm that old, you had to learn to get along, because at that point, it was a man's world, whether you liked it or not. And if you wanted to get anywhere, you had to learn to get along with who there was there to get along with. It happened to be men, until a number of years after I was in the business world, and as more women joined the business world. And one of the things that I had to learn was to have a sense of humor, especially about myself. Because I put myself into an arena, and I was not looked at as a young person. I was looked at as a professional in the business world. And there was no room for personal hurts, or tears, or any of that. You put on your shoes and your big girl pants, and you learned to get along and make your way in your own way, and each woman found their own way to deal with the circumstances of the time. And that was a long time ago, and times have changed for the better for the most part. However, we all still have to learn to get along with whoever our peers in any of the spheres of our life are. And that's what disturbs me here. A lack of humor, a lack of flexibility, and a little, I'm going to change a little bit here, gears here. One of the things that's been mentioned to me by a number of constituents, and I put myself in this arena, I was elected recently for the fourth term, so I'm in my seventh year serving as a councillor, and I know that part of that is when I am out in the public, that I will be speaking with many people who come up to me, call me, text me, email me, or has been said by others, Hennepin is the great meeting center. And one of the things of the many that I discuss with people, that I've heard way too many times, is how often you use the word "I." And this is constituents that are bringing this to my attention. And I think the phrase that I'm going to stop for this moment in time is that there is no "I" in the word "we." That's it for now.
Thank you, Mary. Paul?
My name's Paul Dean. I'm used to saying that, because I've been coming to council meetings now for two years. I'm the new councillor. 16 days ago, I was sworn in right there. The only thing, I'm going to try not to say "um" anymore, but I do have a concern that a little over a month ago, I witnessed, sitting out there where you are tonight, a personal attack on a councillor. And no call of order happened. And then later on in the meeting, when that councillor could, he spoke and responded to what was said. And it's almost like I want to apologize right now, but if I am personally attacked in a meeting, and a point of order isn't made, I'm going to have to defend myself. For me and my family, you know, it's important. There's no place for things like that to happen in this council meeting. I spent 11 years on the Comprehensive Plan Committee, and Joe Sterns was the chairman of that committee, and he told me I needed to read Robert's Rules of Order, which I never did, but I should have. It was a good point. But I learned from him over many years of how those meetings worked, and so, like I say tonight, I have one concern, and that is, I do not want to have to speak back to someone from the public that maybe gets a little carried away. It's important that we check, check things like that. Because I do, I want a welcoming meeting where we can do the people's business. And in order to do that, we need to be civil and respectful. Those are the two words I always like to use. It's the words that Joe always mentioned to me years ago. And we learned on the Comprehensive Plan Committee that it was important to have good ground rules, to be able to sit down with the public during our neighborhood meetings and have people feel welcome. Our first meeting didn't go that well when we were doing that, and then we set up the ground rules, and it went very well after that. And so, for me, as a newcomer, that's my only concern tonight, and I'm going to hold it at that. I have some more education that I need to do as a new councillor, and I'm getting it scheduled at this time so I can know how to better speak, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. Is there further discussion?
Does anybody else have anything to say?
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Actually, I would like to make a motion at this point, if I'm allowed to. I think, from what I'm hearing tonight, I would like to make two motions, if that's possible, for discussion, at least. First motion would be pursuant to Article 3, Section 3 of the city charter. The council hereby modifies the mayor's authorized duties as the council for the city of Belfast has lost confidence in the ability of the mayor to properly represent the actions or inactions of the Belfast City Council, and accordingly would declare that until further notice, the mayor of Belfast is not authorized to speak on behalf of the Belfast City Council.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Discussion? Yeah?
As I said, the conclusion of my remarks, I feel very much that the mayor's comments in the newspaper, and also I did watch the library thing, I thought showed a lack of respect for the council. You seem to, from what you've said, have a pretty low opinion of us, and so I have to question whether or not you can be an effective advocate or spokesperson for us. And that's my concern. Leave it at that.
So it seems clear that this was prepared prior to the meeting, and that other councillors are aware of it. That is very concerning to me, and I feel as though we all should have been provided a copy of what councillor Sanders just read. This is the first time that I'm hearing of it, and it's rather unfortunate. And I really do feel as though this will negatively impact the business of the city. Is there another councillor that would like to discuss this?
I don't know how many months ago, I asked to meet with the mayor, and first thing I said, "Do you know when the last time we spoke was?" And she said, "No, but I think you're going to tell me," because we hadn't. I've spoken with the mayor maybe once in the last year, not in a meeting. She does not communicate. I don't, you know, so I, I think it's, by the way, nobody called me about sending out that letter. Nobody provided that letter to me. It seems to come as great surprise to people that councillors talk to each other, and that's common and normal, and that's life, that's how actually business gets done quite often. That doesn't mean there's secret meetings. There's no secret meetings, unfortunately. It would be great if we could have secret meetings, but we can't. So we end up talking to each other as individuals, something the mayor does not do. When I said I was disappointed, I am deeply disappointed that we are spinning our wheels on this. This is something the mayor should figure out how to get it done, and figure out how to preside over these meetings so that we're not having these problems. This is, the job of the mayor is to preside over the meeting, not to dominate it, not to force something down the council's throat, but to work with us and come up with operating plan. It's not rocket science, and it should be done. So I'm going to support this vote, and I'm deeply aware, I was mayor for eight years. I know mayors going back for almost 40 years. Nothing like this has ever happened before. This is new ground. This kind of alienation that we're dealing with is not something that these five councillors put on the table. The, I'm hoping that this is a, this motion of a lack of confidence, which I have primarily because... because of the mayor's inability to preside over the meeting, as we have agreed on numerous issues. We'll come back in a short while for a vote of confidence, but right now, I'm going to support that motion.
Further discussion? I again find this very unfortunate. I have continued to serve at the best of my ability to preside over every single meeting. I've missed one meeting where I was in England rowing in the World Pilot Game Championships. I prepare extensively for every meeting, and I attempt to call on people as fairly as I can. It is my First Amendment right to share my thoughts and my experience, and I'm so concerned that this will negatively affect the business of the city. And I'm worried that this will end up with more of a public outcry, that this is not the right course of action, that will continue to hamper and diminish our ability to do the business of the city. And so, I request respectfully that you decline to vote for this motion, that you think of me with respect and dignity, and reflect on, yes, what your own experiences are, what my experiences have may have been. My writing to the newspaper was in no way a personal attack of any individual. It was a sharing of my experience of what it has been like to serve in this role in the last year. And I don't find that this is the appropriate venue, and that this meeting is a effective use of our time. Tonight, we were supposed to meet with a consultant to talk about Belfast Yards, a development on the waterfront of the last publicly owned piece of property that the city of Belfast owns. And wouldn't it have been great if all of these people that are here tonight could have also shown up for that workshop, to listen to think, listen and hear about what we're thinking about for Belfast Yards? So I'm very disappointed that in sharing my experience with the public, that this is the response of the council. And I do hope, do you hope that you think about what will, you know, following this, what will happen if this motion passes? Neil?
I would hope that you would not, your comments you just made would seem indicate that you take this potential action not as an expression of our concern about trying to right this relationship, and as just an escalation. You're right to feel that way. It would be the wrong thing for you to do. You did not address my concern, you addressed councillor Hurley's concern. I said twice that my biggest concern was that I felt that you have shown in your, in your public statements, and potentially in other places we don't know about, a lack of respect for the council. You, in plain language, called us bigots, ageists, and racists, or I'm sorry, ageists and sexists, and you're not stepping back on that, you're standing by it apparently. You say it wasn't, the fact that it wasn't directed at individuals is part of the problem, because then it tires everyone. If you have, again, as I said earlier, if you have a problem with one person in particular, or if there's a way we do things that you feel is wrong, bring it to us. You show no indication you listened to anything I said. And so, I don't know, other than taking this action, I don't know where else we can go.
I'm not sure how a vote of no confidence is anything other than a
We're not taking a vote of no confidence.
Okay. I've only heard this, and I'm not a, I don't learn best by hearing, I learn best by seeing. I've only heard this motion once, and I've heard it reflected in what councillor Hurley's comments were, and councillor Hurley's comments were clearly a vote of no confidence, and I heard confidence in the motion that was stated. So I'm really unsure what this actually means.
Can I reread it?
Sure.
Thank you. And then I'll speak to what I think it means. Pursuant to Article III, Section 3 of the City Charter, the council hereby modifies the mayor's authorized duties as the council for the city of Belfast has lost confidence in the ability of the mayor to properly represent the actions or inactions of the Belfast City Council, and accordingly declares that until further notice, the mayor of Belfast is not authorized to speak on behalf of Belfast City Council. That's the motion. And the important part for me, Mayor Parity, is the last bit of the sentence, that until further notice, the mayor of Belfast is not authorized to speak on behalf of Belfast City Council. I opened my comments tonight with my view that what I would like to do tonight is to get the council, not the mayor and the council, not the mayor, the council including the mayor, back in the forefront of doing business for the city. And right now, based on your guest column in the Village Soup, I'm not confident to say that you should be authorized to speak on behalf of Belfast City Council. That's my motion. The word "confidence" is in there, that we've lost confidence in the ability of the mayor to properly represent us. That's in there because of all of the indications and innuendos that I reviewed in my comments about the article.
Thank you.
So, that's, that's, we read it. I have another motion after that one, too. Only one more.
I'd like to clarify that I've never been authorized to speak on behalf of the Belfast City Council. I was authorized by the voters to represent the city. And in any motion, in any of my city business, I have come to the council for permission before speaking on behalf of the entire council. And any letter that I've written on behalf of the council, and any interaction at different mayor's coalition meetings, or speaking engagements, if I speak on behalf of the council, I have always come to the council, and the council has made that very clear from the beginning when I was elected. And I think that is only fair to come to the council to ask what your thoughts are before I represent you. So I, I'm unsure of why this motion is necessary. It seems as to be a political attempt to, again, escalate things. It just, it's not, I don't see that it's necessary. So, because I've never been authorized to speak on behalf of the city without your permission with the city council. What I have been authorized to do is speak on behalf of the voters by being elected mayor last November. And there are other comments? Mike?
Yeah, those are two different things, and no one's curtailing your right to speak on behalf of the citizens of all of Belfast, and I've seen you do that, and I think you do it well, so thank you for that. I just want to, yeah, anyway, I think that's my only point.
I want to make clear that this is, and it is confusing because Eric did use the word "confidence," and by the way, I just saw that just before the meeting, that this has nothing to do with the fine work you've done with the Climate Change Committee or anything like that. I think the way I read it, maybe I misunderstand, Eric couldn't, is that we're just, want to make clear that you've made these, what I, as I've said earlier, insinuations about people. You, I think you were out of order in your response to Lee Woodward. We can do, agree, we can disagree on those things. But what I do not want is anyone in this city or outside of the city to feel that when you say those things, that we stand by them, point blank, without further discussion, that, that you do not, you do not speak for us in those kind of things.
I think you've made that clear by holding this meeting. I don't think that it's necessary to take this vote. And, is there further discussion? If there, it seems as though this is getting to an amendment or a possible change in the city charter. And I'm not a lawyer, but the way I understand it is that the city charter, to amend the city charter, we need to go through an extensive process, it's an extensive public process. And so, I'm not really sure how this motion really accomplishes anything.
I'm not sure what part of the city charter you're referring to.
So the city charter, the powers and duties, the mayor shall preside at all meetings and shall perform other duties consistent with the office. You know, the city charter lays out what our roles and responsibilities are, and I don't believe it's the role of the council to amend those roles and responsibilities. I think that would go through a charter process because it's a public process. But there has been a, a motion before us, and that's not the belief of other councillors. Mary?
I believe in the charter, under the duties and responsibilities of the council, there is a statement along the lines of, and I don't have it in front of me, and I don't know if the manager has it in front of him, but it's along the lines of, amongst other things, that the council is the executive and legislative body, and has the ability or the role to self-govern, and, that's not the exact word. Do you have it handy?
I don't.
There's a comment that people are having trouble hearing. The mic does not provide application. The mic does not provide application. We don't have mics, we don't have a hearing. We have, what we have is if you have a hearing aid, you can tune in through telephone mode, and there's instructions on the wall right over here. But otherwise, I'll ask councillors, please speak louder.
So, in the city charter, under the definitions and explanations of the roles and responsibilities of the city council, it refers to, first, that the council is the executive and legislative body, and that further down, it talks about the council self-governing, which I believe is what this falls under.
Thank you. Further discussion? There's a motion in front of us?
I believe the, I believe the manager is going, has a copy of the charter, if you'd like to
Would you like to speak, Joe?
All I'm going to say is that the city attorney has reviewed this motion, and passed upon it as being consistent with the city charter. I can read Section 3.3 if people want to, but the city attorney has reviewed this, this motion.
Again, it is very concerning to me that the city attorney has reviewed this motion, and I have yet to see it, and it is before us at this meeting today.
Amen. Amen.
The city, the city attorney represents the entire city, and I am the elected leader of the city, and to have not seen this motion before this meeting is very concerning. I will call the motion. Unless you have a, you would like to make more discussions, Mary?
I have a concern when you talk about being the elected leader of the city. In the job description, which you read a portion of for the mayor, that is not part of it. You hold a ceremonial role.
This motion that you read, Eric, is the first time I've heard of this, too. You know, there's another council make that point. So in other words, lawyer heard it before me, so, thank you.
Joe?
It is not uncommon for an elected member of the council to seek legal advice before they walk into a council meeting and propose action. It is very common. And usually, that dialogue happens between the individual council member and the attorney, until such time as the individual council member decides whether they're going to move it forward or not. Doing the research is not something we advertise on television, because we just don't know if it's going to, it's going to bear fruit or not. But that's, that's a very common practice. There's no attempt here to, the motion's here, it speaks for itself, except the council doesn't know what they want to do with it.
Further discussion? Are you ready for a vote on the motion? All in favor of the motion? Motion passes five to zero.
I stand with the mayor.
The meeting should be called.
The meeting is not a war.
Call the meeting, no matter what, ma'am, ma'am.
Yes, this is getting out of hand.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I have another motion, ma'am, as I indicated about ten minutes ago. It's pretty short. That the prior decision of the city council to participate in the mayor's coalition, along with several other municipalities in the state, the motion is that that is to be reversed, and to give the city manager direction to arrange for the withdrawal of the city's membership from that group.
Second.
Second.
Wow. The mayor's coalition works with ten mayors from across the state to work on city policy at the state level, which I am a member of, and an active leader of, and have gotten the mayor's coalition to talk about climate change and energy legislation. And we are currently talking about ways to increase our funding so that our property taxes don't have to increase here in Belfast, talking about ways to increase municipal revenue sharing and state education funding. And at our next council meeting, on the agenda was my update from the mayor's coalition to talk about possibilities at the next legislative session, so that our property taxes here in Belfast don't have to increase. And that is the number one issue I heard from constituents when I knocked on your doors. And it's something that really has a huge impact at the state level. Our state legislatures make decisions about municipal revenue sharing, about tax sharing, and education funding that absolutely impacts what we do here in Belfast. And the loss of me participating in the mayor's coalition would be a huge loss to the citizens of Belfast, and I'm appalled that this is even on the table. Further discussion? Neil?
Again, you have no confidence in the council. Your silence when I asked you twice, when I brought the issue up, indicates that is clearly the case. And yet, we are supposed to think that the mayor, who calls us bigots, is representing us to this organization. Why would we have confidence in your ability to do that? Simplest question is that. If I got an answer to that I thought was satisfactory, I would not support this motion. But when I brought it up several times now, you just ignored my concern.
This is not a public trial. I shared my comments, it's my First Amendment right, and I would be happy to have conversations outside of a public meeting. I again, and as evidenced by this motion, this meeting is negatively impacting the business of the city. The city is, one among many, cities in Maine, and to not work with other mayors across the state to move forward legislative policy that benefits our constituents is the state to move forward legislative policy that benefits our constituents is absolutely absurd. Mike?
Could you not work together? Would it be illegal for you all to talk together when Ellen is watching you?
Yes.
This is a beautiful group of people that need.
The meeting will be in order soon. Thank you.
Like I said, and I agree with you, Mayor, this is distressing, disturbing, bad for Belfast, and we're here now because of, and I forgot to quote, I watched the video also, and...